Good evening and welcome to the Policy Subcommittee Meeting held today at the George Rahm Little Theater at Brockton High, 470 Forest Ave. Today is Tuesday, August 13th, and it's 5:05. If we could all stand and please salute the flag.
(Inaudible). United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome again to the Policy Subcommittee Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 13th. Prior to starting this, we'll establish a quorum. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Mr. Gomes?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Chairman Mayor Sullivan?
Yes, sir. Here.
Mrs. Azak?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Tony Rodriguez, Vice Chair, is present, also Superintendent, Mrs. Tellingini here, Dr. Tellingini. So, on the agenda today, we have a couple of policies that need to be enacted on. We have the DJE procurement requirements, the BGB policy adoption in our student handbooks across the district. Prior to this, in addition to attending, the public can view this meeting via television or Comcast, Channel 8 and 1071 HD version, and online via this link, www.youtube.com/thebrocktonchannels. And the floor is all yours, Superintendent.
So I was hoping to invite up Deputy Superintendent Walder to speak to the handbooks. Is that where we want to start?
If we want to just hold off until she gets there, we could just go through the other two items prior to the handbooks.
Gotcha. Okay. So the DJE procurement requirements are in your packet, and they have been redlined so that you can see the changes that we were, that we are recommending for, to make this updated with the current Mass General law. So since the procurement policies have changed, and now we, now we have the ability to go up to the 100,000, when it, before it was 50,000, we are wanting to update this policy so that we are aligned to Mass General law.
Thank you. Members with any question, Mrs. Azak?
Thank you. So thank you, Superintendent. Under the policy DJE, I just had a question. So in years past, I know when we turned the bid review Subcommittee into a committee of a whole, I know we had talked about when they opened the bids. I've never been present for any of those. Is it something that we could add, that the Subcommittee is there for when the bids are opened as part of this? We've never been there. I don't know when they're opened, what the process is. We've always seen it, when it came to the actual bid review, then the bids were presented to us. So is this something that we want to put in here that when they open the bids, it needs to be posted?
I think that, that's, Mayor can chime in on this, Superintendent, that's already a policy and a procedure that they do follow. It's already listed that those bids are supposed to be opened in public.
It does say, "All bids will be submitted in sealed envelopes addressed to the Superintendent and plainly marked with the name of the bid and the time of the bid opening." Bids will be opened in public all the times specified, at all times and specified, and all bidders will be invited to be present, but where is it posted for these bids?
Mayor?
If I could, through you, Vice Chair, School Committee Woman Azak, the Chief Procurement Officer for City of Brockton, Mike Morris, one of his jobs that he's charged to do is fiduciary duty, his legal duty, is to make sure bids are done in an open setting. We typically use the GAR room, Grand Army of the Public Room on the second floor, which is, you know, down the hall from the Chamber. And Mike, I mean, we can get that listing, but Mike, because there is no designation right now on the school side for procurement, there will be hopefully in the near future, Mike is charged to do all that. So I'll make sure that, and it is posted, but I'll make sure that we give it to all the members of the school committee.
Okay. So that would be something that, rather than put it in the policy, I see it's already broken down, but I didn't know if we had to specify it a little more, so at least maybe the committee members are notified that are on that committee, the date and the time. I know that's what they do on the city side, but the school department opens their bids separately.
Correct. It doesn't go to the city?
Through you, Vice Chair, the, right now, the bids are being coordinated through Mike Morris. I do believe he did designate Joe Campbell on the school side to help for IT purposes only. The city councils aren't notified currently. We could do that, but it is notice to the general public. If anybody wants to go, it's an open bid. People apply, and then the envelopes are actually unsealed in public in the GAR room. But why don't I just get the list, and I'll report back at the next meeting. We could always invite Mike Morris to a school committee member or a Subcommittee member to explain it in detail.
I appreciate that.
You can schedule that, the next, just the, you know, just for, you know, information sharing is that, you know, we've had a working group, and we've been meeting regarding procurement because there were some issues. But the other piece that's, is that, that we do have the ability with the state combine system, which not overshadowing our authority, but it saves the district thousands of dollars when we do that, where you don't need that, that procedure of opening sealed envelopes because it's already on a state contract, so. But certain bids do have to get posted, and there is a process for that. So, but I think this right here, this is actually amended by the city solicitor, Megan Bridges. You know, I was working on her, working with her to make sure that this gets addressed because we do have some bids that have to go out, and this needed action on it immediately. So that's why we have this on tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
Any members have any other questions relative to the procurement changes? Mrs. Sullivan?
I know they're usually open during the day, and some members work, so I don't know if that would really be, members would be able to be there during the day. So, I mean, I don't work during the day, but some members work during the day, so I think it would be hard for those people to get there during the day.
No, I agree with you, but I think, you know...
If they're on the Subcommittee. And I don't feel a need, because it's brought right to us anyway. So I don't feel a need that we have to be there when they're opened.
No, I totally agree with you on that.
They're always open before, and then the Subcommittee met, and we discussed everything. I mean, Mike Beandis always did it with us. We discussed everything. I don't need to be there when they're opened because, I mean, all they are is opened. The committee decides, Subcommittee and the committee decide if they're going to vote on them, which one, you know? And we go with the lowest bidder, so.
We don't always.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions or concerns regarding this?
If I could, through you again, Ms. Vice Chair, what the Vice Chair said is crucial. As you recall, many months ago, Solicitor came before us, I think it might have been when we were at the unknown school, and expressed again, by law, certain things that the schools did not necessarily put RFPs on the streets needs to be done. And, you know, one is transportation. So that's why this is time of the essence. So the hope would be to have a favorable recommendation, and then at the regular scheduled meeting in an hour's time, we would vote on it. So then it's enacted, it's confirmed, and then everybody can hit the ground running because, again, and I've said it before, we all collectively are concerned about the location where we're going to have the students that were formerly at the fairgrounds, because, again, an RFP has to go out for that. So, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Any follow-ups, Doctor? Mr. Gomes?
Just a quick question. I don't know if the mayor can answer this. So who signs off once they open the bids?
Well, on the, again, the Chief Procurement Officer, by law, and the Vice Chair is right, if it's on the state bid list, you can, in essence, avoid RFPs in procurement, right? It's already been allowed on the state bid list. But certain bids have to be put out to the RFP process, and so Mike, in his capacity, that's why I think it'd be important for him to come back before us. In his capacity, he opens it. He's, in essence, the keeper of the records for the bids. He opens it, and then typically, not always, typically it's the lowest bidder, but there's some times where there's some other, and you know this from your prior appointment at the IRA.
That's what I'm asking, because for us, what we do is, we'll have whoever's there, you need at least two, three people, and then once you open the bid, there is a sheet that you fill out, the company, how much they bid for, and then everybody signs to, you know, contest that this is the amount that each company submitted. So I guess that's what I was asking, because if it's public and a lot of people come, who signs those documents to attest that this is the amount that each company submitted?
Well, so they have to submit it to even be considered to be...
Yes.
...part of the bidding process, and then, again, Mike, and there's a witness there, it's not just him in a room by himself, but I would, I'm going to ask, I'll see him tomorrow morning at Department Head Meeting, I'll ask if he can come to the next meeting, because I don't want to misspeak. I don't know the actual process, other than he is charged by law to do the procurement under his title.
Gotcha. Thank you. I mean, just in far as with the bids on the school side, I think the best course of action is, you know, for the school district to go using the state combine system, which is saving us a lot of money, which, you know, avoids us from having meetings and awarding it when the state's already awarded those contracts. So we can entertain a motion to approve the amended copy that's in front of all the members today so that this can be enacted, because we do have some procurement that we have to get done sooner than later.
Motion to approve the amended DJE procedure requirements?
Second. Motion was made by Mr. Gomes, properly seconded by Mr. Sullivan. We can do this roll call, or we can do a show of hands. I would do, I would do a roll call. Mrs. Sullivan?
Are you going to check something, Mayor?
Your mic.
Will we vote on it?
Through the Vice Chair, I, no, I'm not going to check it. I mean, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask Mr. Morris, Chief Procurement Officer, to come to our next meeting, to just go through the whole process, but why this is, again, time is of the essence, so that we can get the RFPs on the streets for transportation, school location, because school's right around the corner, as my kids tell me every day. So we would need to act on this, in my humble opinion, this evening.
So we should act on it this evening?
That would be my suggestion.
Okay, then yes for me.
Yes. Mr. Gomes? Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, passed. Thank you. The next agenda item is the BGB policy adoption.
Thank you. That item is also attached to your packets, and so if there are any questions...
Do you want to just give a quick overview of what the policy entails for public consumption?
Yes. So it is a policy regarding how we actually adopt policies in our committee, and so it, it is a summary of the fact that the adoption of new policies is solely the responsibility of the school committee, and that they do require an affirmative vote of a majority of the members of the committee. It also outlines the process by which we receive policies, meaning that the packet goes out with the information in it. There's a discussion in our Policy Subcommittee Meeting, and then there's an action item that is proposed, similar to what we're doing right now. Amendments to the policy at the action stage do not require repetition of the sequence, unless the committee so directs, and in the case of an emergency or in conditions of an emergency, the school committee could dispense with the above sequence.
Thank you. Any questions from any of the members? Mrs. Sullivan?
Was anything changed in it? Because we already had this policy. So was anything changed? I know I had it here somewhere, now I can't find it. I can't find it now.
I believe it's just...
The yellow line, sorry, I should have said that. I believe it's just the yellow lined portion.
I know I had it, but now I can't find it.
It says that we can dispense with them if there's emergency conditions.
Oh, that we can...
Dispense with the above sequence if there's emergency conditions. So sorry, I should have outlined that, so that, what is highlighted in yellow.
That's the only thing changed?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan? Followed by Mr. Vega?
I'd like to make a motion. The motion is to approve items...
Before you make the motion, can...
GP?
Mr. Vega has a question.
I don't know if it's a question or just, and again, maybe it's not something that needs to be in the policy. Some of us have had a discussion about, you know, the Friday delivery makes sense. It's usually followed by a Tuesday meeting. That's not often enough time to actually give the materials that are being considered enough attention. And now, I don't know if that needs to be codified in the language we use here, but, you know, and again, we have that emergency line, which I agree with, but we might also want to put language in, just so that folks know when setting the policy, that, you know, you know, if it's delivered on Friday, five days of reading before any expectation of discussion might be helpful. Yeah, I found myself, I know I'm the new guy, but I found myself cramming with Saturday and Sunday plans, trying to make sure that I'm doing my due diligence on these things before I vote. So I don't know if we need to add the language, or just have an understanding, but...
Ms. Azak?
I echo Mr. Vega's statement. We've, we've talked about this before, so we've had comments, yes, we signed up for this, but sometimes people don't realize, on a Friday night, you get a packet with five handbooks, six handbooks, and you're also working, and you're trying to get things done, and to do our due diligence to be ready for a Tuesday meeting. So sometimes when, depending on the material that's given to us, we really should put something in here that they allow us a little extra time, or get us the material. Sometimes they're working, and I'm focusing on the handbooks, because that's next, sometimes they're working on them for months or weeks, but we only have two days to look at them. So I think it's just in all fairness for the committee, so we can do our job and better serve our students and our families, rather than try to rush through these, give us a little more time. So maybe add a little wording in there, that depending on the material given, get it to us a little sooner. Our agendas are fine, it's a small packet, but when it's something that needs immediate attention and approval, that's going to affect, you know, handbooks. So, I know I wasn't the only committee member. A few of us made the same comment about not having enough time. So maybe we should put some wording in. Thank you.
Mr. Gomes?
Yeah, I'll echo that as well, totally agree. This is a lot to take in on a Friday. I worked all Friday, came home, I didn't even see it until the weekend. So, and I work on weekends as well, so to go through, I was cramping through everything here. It's a lot of information to read. I understand, you know, professionals are doing this, but I just want to make sure, you know, I'm accompanying, if I have a question, or if there's something I might want to suggest, I'm, you know, ready to suggest those changes and whatnot. So if we could either get these ahead of time, or if we get it on a Friday, maybe not to be discussed in this meeting, maybe the following meeting, so we have a whole week at least to go through and digest information, that would be much appreciated.
Mr. Vice Chair, my, my, I concur with what everybody's saying. I think we need to incorporate language that's ratified by this committee. My only thought would be, Attorney Breznerhand's not here right now, so if we take this favorable from the Subcommittee to 6 o'clock regular, Kevin will be here, we can make amendments on the floor before they get passed tonight after 6 o'clock meeting. Because I, we can come up with some language, right? Like, I guess I can throw my little law hat on, but at the end of the day, we want to make sure that it's crystal clear, it's codified, it's ratified, and there's no ambiguities or anything that's not crystal clear. That'd be my thoughts.
You know, just reviewing this, I think the only language change would be changed where it says that the Friday packet on item number one, whatever the will of the committee is, you know, two weeks prior, or to the next, you know, following school committee meeting, what we can, whatever the will of the committee is, if you want to take a vote to adopt this with language being modified with, once legal counsel shines in. Mr. Vega?
Just one question, and I don't know if there's rules around this, like, does the Friday packet have to include only materials for the upcoming meeting? Because then it could stay with the Friday packet. It would just, the expectation would just be, wouldn't be the Friday before the Tuesday, the next meeting, and just keep things neat that way?
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't. I mean, we get, I mean, we can get material three weeks ahead of time...
Okay, we can get it, yeah.
...to take on. I mean, that's, you know, with the superintendent and the cabinet working on that, to make sure that we get, you know, if we're getting several handbooks that, you know, we have at least, you know, two weeks to, to review.
My only suggestion, Mr. Vice Chair, would be to say, such as, not less than X business days prior to the meeting. Could be five business days, could be seven business days. It's much better to do business days, because you're going to catch yourself extra days on the weekend anyhow. So I think it should be business days, and I think it should be not less than, we should put that carb out there, so that if people on the school side have it prepared two weeks before, or even three weeks before, we can get it earlier. But I just don't know what Attorney Breznerhand thinks that magic number should be.
Okay. Ms. Azak?
Sorry, not to throw a monkey wrench into things, but, um, so, reading it says, information item hyphen distribution with agenda, so it's material given to us with the agenda. There should also read material given to us the night of a meeting. There should be all material given to the school committee, should allow us a certain amount of, we're always giving, then, and I know a few of us have voiced this concern, we're given material at a meeting, we're expected to read it at the meeting, during a presentation, ask questions, and then vote on it. And we've talked about this, and now we're, you know, we're making changes. I really think that we should, moving forward, any material that the committee is expected to review, you know, presentations can be given to us, maybe the Friday before, but like, like the mayor had mentioned, allow some time.
Can we just entertain a motion to postpone this approval to our regular school committee with legal counsel?
Sure. Motion to post, Ms. Oliver?
Want to go ahead?
You can do it, go ahead.
Motion to postpone, let me go back to this, the discussion of policy, BGB policy adoption to the regular meeting while waiting for legal counsel.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Oliver, seconded by Ms. Azak, a show...
He didn't finish the motion. He should have revoked his motion.
We didn't get to that.
He didn't get a second on the motion, so it died.
It didn't say, yeah. Yeah. We'll do a roll call, but Mrs. Sullivan? We're voting to postpone this policy to our regular school committee meeting, adoption with legal counsel once he's present.
I thought we just wanted to accept...
No, we adopted one, this is a different one.
This is a different one?
This is BGB.
Yes. Mrs. Sullivan's yes. Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Next on the agenda is policy for BPS Student Parent Handbooks 2024-2025. Doctor?
Yes, so you do have several handbooks that you have received just on Friday, but there, these are the standard handbooks, and they have been redlined with the changes that we are proposing for this upcoming year. And I will invite Deputy Superintendent Walder up to answer any specific questions you may have, although I do understand you may not have had the opportunity to review all of them, and may not have all your questions. But I would propose that we invite her up. One of the substantive changes for all of our handbooks is changing the Student Family Handbook, or Student Parent Handbook title to be Student Family Handbook.
Thank you. Mrs. Walder? So I know there's several, but just, this is just my recommendation, if we can, they're all priority, if we can just say what we need, just in case if we don't get through it, we can move some of the handbooks to a, a next policy meeting. And if we could just hold off on the questions till Mrs. Walder goes through all of the redline changes, and then we can ask questions regarding that specific school.
So, it wasn't my intention to go through every redline change with you, but to give you an overview, because we'll be here till midnight, because we have, every handbook has some redline changes in it. So what Dr. LaBilbo provided for you was just an overview of the change process for the handbook. And I'm going to start with a public, I'm sorry to all of you, because normally you would have this in more time. And so in years past, we have been able to get the handbook to you by May, early June, because on our end, we have to, once you make the adoption of these, because these are policy, we have to get them translated, we have to get them put on the website, we have to get them printed so that they're in the schools and available for students on the first day of school. So the fact that you don't have significant time to really read and review, and understanding that some of you are very new to this, so you've never actually probably spent any time looking through these, I have to say, I am sorry that we couldn't get them to you sooner. With all of the many things that we have all been going, dealing with, this is one of the things that ended up taking longer for a couple of reasons. One, in the agreement with the union, in the contract, there is language that there was a task force that for every level, and so that those units had to come together with members of the bargaining unit, and they had to come together, and they had to read through the handbook and make some disciplined suggestions. And so that part of the process did take time, because we had to have them for elementary, middle, and sec, and high school, to go through all of the handbooks, and as a group of people kind of agree what changes needed to be made. And if you've ever sat in on that practice, you understand how difficult it is on both sides of that to agree with what are the changes that needed to be made. Once they made those recommendations, those recommendations had to go back to Unified Services, and that team of people had to make some edits into the handbook and get it to our legal team, and the legal team then has to go through it, make sure not only what we put in it matches what we would like, but it actually matches the law. And when laws change, they have to give us the wording on how it needs to be put in the handbook. And one of the suggestions we hear all the time is make it more student-friendly, or make it more friendly to people, and on the legal side of things, they have to make it legal. And so that legal language is very much a part of what you see in the handbook. From that process, then it gets put together and brought to you. And normally, we would have had it to you much sooner to give you more time to think through and process it. And so, again, for that, we apologize if this took so long, and it won't. We'll start the process earlier in the future, because there is that, that piece of the contract that says that there needs to be a group of people on both sides, both on the management and the BEA side, really looking at what goes into the handbook. And so what you'll notice, that Jamie pointed out, Dr. LaBilbo pointed out to you in his, in his summary, was that process that folks went through. And then what is also clear is that there are certain policies that you already have on the website in a separate location. So the bullying policy has to be updated every year. That has to go on this, to the handbook. The harassment policy and procedures have changed, and so those updated procedures have to go onto the handbook. Because what happened in the past is, we had information that bullying, here's what we say about bullying, but the policy, the full policy and the process was kept in a separate location. And so one of the things that the team of people putting the handbook together did this time was pulled those policies, so they're not just living somewhere else on the website, but actually pulled it, and they're making it part of the handbook. So that's one of the reasons why it's thicker, and will take longer to not only print, but to ensure it's appropriately translated, but that is in addition to the handbook. Other language, some other policies that you, you have voted on, for example, the Brockton High School cellphone policy wasn't in the past book, you'll see that it's been added to this book. And so what you'll see is some highlights there that really speak to those changes, and then very specifically, where you see, you know, the superintendent's letter, or the letter from the principals, those things change regularly. And then when you get into the details of the book, you'll notice some of the changes, and that would be changes that either legally we needed to make, or those were the changes that were agreed upon by those groups, that we needed to make sure were added into the book. Ultimately, what we want to make sure is that we're identifying what students' rights are, what their responsibilities are, what parents' rights are, or families' rights are, and what their responsibilities are. And then we want to highlight some of the, there are, the reality is, there are consequences for behaviors, and so identifying what some of those consequences are, so it's not a guess. People need to know what their rights are under due process, they need to have it outlined for them what due process is, and so, and on the other end of that, what are some of the consequences that come with behaviors that are identified as suspendable, or there needs to be an intervention, or there needs to be some sort of consequence that allows them to stay in school but have a consequence. So that is the way the handbook is set up, that is the information that is outlined in the handbook, and understanding that, no, there's no way, you will have time to read every one of these from Friday to Tuesday, and actually live your lives and get some sleep. I just need to make sure that I acknowledge that for you, and point out that we did not make significant changes to this from what we've had in the past. What we did do was make sure that the policies that you voted on during the school year got included, and that the language that the teachers and administrators said that they need it for their school was included, and that our attorneys agreed that what we have here is legally defensible in what we should be doing. So with that being said, if you have... So with that being said, if you have specific questions, I can try to go through it with you. But other than that, the redlines, every single one of them will have some.
Thank you. Mrs. Oliver, followed by Mrs. Sullivan and Mrs. Azak.
Not so much a question, but a request, and also just to, I want to read something out. For the standing orders, I'm going to put my nursing hat on. Do we have an updated physician, school district physician orders that the school committee can look at? The only question I have is about the butyral sulfate for asthma. I want to know exactly how it's been prescribed, because every child is different. So I just want to, I know it's a standing order, when I worked as a school nurse, we never had that as a standing order. So I just want to make sure, I want to look at that order to know exactly how a nurse is administering it and how the physician ordered it.
Okay.
My other thing that I'm just going to read, so everybody's aware out there, the school district in Massachusetts have been approved to receive partial reimbursement for Mass Health for the cost of health-related service provided by the school district to your child and children. So that means every time your child goes into a school nurse and we administer any of this medication, we are basically sending that information to Mass Health, which you get reimbursed with. So just in the future, this is why we're stating we fight for those partial reimbursement for Mass Health to come back to the school district, because our nurses work extremely hard, seeing our pay, you know, our students to make sure they're healthy and they're safe in our school. So we want to make sure that that money's coming back to the right facility. Also, a quick question, the ESPT survey that we do, I know it's like buried into the handbook. Is there paperwork or information sent to parents? I've done it, it's a great program. I think it's one of the things that I first, when I first started, I started doing it to, I think it was grade six to 10th grade. And it's very invasive questions that we have to ask the students. And I know a lot of parents opt out of it. I just want to make sure we are sending a separate sheet to in detail exactly what that is all about, so they know how to opt, because it says at the end to opt out.
Opt out, right.
And we know parents are reading this handbooks all the way through. So I want to make sure that's also being sent separately.
We, we do notify when it is time to do those, but we will make sure that we are adding in that message that the, the place where they can go to opt out, where it is located.
Thank you, and also about the physician orders would be great.
Have Linda Cahill update us on that and get that to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Cellphone policy, is it already updated in here, the copy we got, or?
It is, it should be the, what you voted on in March.
Yeah, because this says third violation, student is issued a yonder pouch, that phone must be kept in.
Are you looking at Brockton High?
Yep, I'm looking at Brockton High. So I don't think this part was updated.
Okay, we'll make sure that gets updated immediately.
What page number?
It's 26 in Brockton High. Maybe used during students' lunch period, and also maybe used during the classes.
So they have.
Mission, I don't think this was, I think this is last year's policy. I don't think this is, because I remember reading.
Tell me your page again.
Yeah, 26 in Brockton High. Because since that's the only thing we really changed, that's what I went to, because everything else is the same from last year, except if she redlined it or put yellow wire. Electronic device policy, page 26.
I'll make sure that we get that.
Because Mr. McGaskell, his first offense and second offense and third offense were not these that he said last week or our last meeting. He had different things for the first, second, and third offense.
That's correct.
And this isn't completely updated.
That's correct, yep.
Okay.
So just if we could update that with the new policy, that would be good.
We'll get that taken care of tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you for catching that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Thank you.
Mrs. Azak, followed by Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, actually, Mrs. Sullivan touched base on two of my questions. It was the cellphone policy, because I don't remember that they could use it during the lunch, because I mean, they're going to open the yonder bags.
It's in the bag, so.
Yeah, so I, she touched base, those were the two questions, and then, so one other question I had is page number five. So I get it.
Brockton High is still?
Brockton High, we're on Brockton High. So page number five, Brockton High, I get it, accidents happen. But if we have repeat students that are damaging the devices, I thought at one point we had said, when it gets to a certain point, there's going to be a fee of some sorts. I mean, if you have repeat, you know, these are expensive devices that we're giving them to use for free. I don't see anything in here.
Because you didn't get to a point where you voted on what that would be. So we did have this conversation a couple of times.
Okay.
And I remember that was one of the areas that you were coming back to. And I think we all got so busy with so many other things, it maybe, it didn't come back to actually vote on what those fees would be.
Okay, I'd definitely like to reach out to our IT department. If someone can reach out to them and let us know how often, how many are repeat students that have damaged devices, and how many do we go through? Because I mean, we do get extra, but if, again, some students, it might just be a regular thing, like, oh, my laptop broke again. So I'd like to see something that might just slow things down a little. And then one other thing is, is, I did this last year too. So the text, the text line, where you text, it's a hotline. Where does that number go? Because I texted it earlier, and I didn't get a response.
I'll find out, because they used to come to me and to the superintendent. I don't know if you got them, I have not gotten any of those.
The hotline, if someone is having issues and not safe?
Which line?
Yeah, no, this is the hotline.
TextaTip, was it something else?
This was, it had its own page. And Ms. Walder, this is wonderful, but I think I'm showing my age, font number five. Can we enlarge the font a little?
I didn't want to pull my glasses off and look over them. So I'm trying to play it off as best I can, like I can see it.
Again, we have to make sure they're legible for families to be able to read these online. So font number five did not go over well.
And it wouldn't be that small, they just had to leave comment space, and so that's why it's that small.
So I'm going to look up. It's a hotline, and I, I know I texted it earlier to see who's, if anyone was going to answer me. It's in the book.
Okay, we'll find it.
And I texted them, I'm trying to look through my phone to see. It was like a five-digit number, it wasn't, it wasn't a long number.
We'll find it, because I do know what you're talking about, I can't.
Because I'm thinking the superintendent and our employees are not going to be on their phones all day long. This is the one if a student is feeling unsafe.
Yes.
If there's anything the student feels uncomfortable and needs to talk to someone, that, that hotline. I thought that went to our police department. I could be wrong, or it went to.
So we had, it was called TextaTip at the time, and it did go to the school principal. It went to an IT person, it went to the superintendent, it went to, at some point, we were concerned, especially after hours, that someone needed to have access to that. So it did go to the police. But I need to make sure that it is still, the line that we're using then, that it's active. And if not, we need to get that updated.
It's the 274637.
Okay.
My history showed up from 2021, last time I texted it, and it said unable to find target agency. Please check agency keyword. So if we just want to make sure that, and again, if it's trained individuals that are going to be getting these text messages, if a student needs to reach out to someone, whether it's suicidal, or thoughts, or, you know, things personally happening in their, in their life that they need to talk to someone, so.
Great, okay.
I'll keep texting that.
We'll check it, because I think all grade levels have it, so we'll make sure.
Oh, here it is, it's page number 88, 88, 89.
Mr. Sullivan? You got it, Mrs. Azak?
Yep.
Yes, Ms. Walder, thank you. This packet that starts off with academic counseling, is that the changes that are in here? There's about seven or eight pages.
Academic counseling, I think, is what is being added to. You'll have a section there that is added to.
The reason I ask, it talks about Norwell Public Schools, Ian Brockton Public Schools.
Okay.
Somebody accidentally put in there Norwell.
Okay.
On the, it's on the last page.
Gotcha.
The reason I ask is, I didn't know if that goes into the handbook like this.
We'll make sure it doesn't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you find it on the last page?
Yep.
Last paragraph.
All right, we'll get it, thank you.
Just making sure it doesn't go into the regular handbook.
I've got it, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Sullivan?
I was just on the electronic, I don't know if this is what you meant, Joyce, but you could correct me if I'm wrong. I think that since the cellphone, we're going to have, if they damage them, we're going to have a fee. We should have a fee if they damage the laptops too. Because I know I got some complaints from some of the teachers that they were destroying laptops, and it's the same people doing it. So since we are implementing something on the yonder pouches, I think we should implement it on the laptops too, because it needs to be respected, it's a free device to the students, it needs to be respected, not destroyed, so.
So a couple of years ago.
I think it would be a good time to implement that.
A couple of years ago, during our COVID years, remember, we had to make some addendums to the handbook? And so we ended up, some of the things that you're talking about, that we need to make sure are policies that aren't currently here, but you need some time to kind of vet out and figure out the language, we can always add an addendum to the handbook. So hearing you, like the yonder pouch policy, damaging it, here's what it would cost if you want to work through a policy. And we can revisit the policy that we started talking about, was probably November of last year, for the, for the laptops and others, so you can make a decision on how you want to move forward with any fees associated with that. We could certainly come back to that and have an addendum added to the handbook.
Any follow-up questions? Just to piggyback off of Mrs. Azak, you know, we have this BHS text for help. And it's, you know, you text boxers to the number. Knowing that we are going to have the yonder bag program here at the high school. And I'm just thinking, being a student in Brockton High, I know something is going to happen, or my friend is dealing with something, but I don't want to tell an adult. And I want to get that information to as quickly as possible. And I can have that ability with that bag. So what other means are we going to have to try to address that? I mean, I could throw a million and one examples, and I think a lot of my colleagues can throw a million and one examples. A child's going home and feels unsafe, but that child jumps on the bus, but that text message is getting to whoever's supposed to be getting these text messages, but that kid's going home and feeling unsafe, where we just put this program into place, and we kind of held the process that we already have.
So in any decision that you make, there are the what-ifs that will probably make you lose some sleep. And what I will say to you is this, relationships matter, and making sure that students feel like they have a trusted adult in the school is critical. There is a laptop that will allow students to do an anonymous report to us, we get those. And so that they will still have access to. I can tell you honestly, I don't know that there were a lot of people sending messages that way to inform adults of something that was going to happen. I'm not saying they don't, because some would, would, and, and have in the past. But it is going to be critical in the messaging that is done by the leadership and the educators in this school to, to make it clear to students how they have access to adults, so that when they know something without feeling like they're being exposed, they can still get that message to that staff. Kids have sent emails, especially during COVID, and thereafter, sent emails to teachers to just say, here's what's going on, and they've used that. And so they have access to technology, and they will not have access to their phone technology. And so that piece of it needs to be clear to them. And the other part of it is really building those relationships and making sure, especially coming into a school, freshmen who are coming in, which is why I'm happy they're doing four days of orientation, to really give them a chance to get connected to the school and who's in the school and who's here to help them, so they can find those human resources to, to engage in that way with. And for the students who are coming back, to really work with them in the same way. And so there's that piece of it, there's the other reality of it, that any policy that you put in place, what is the data telling you? And if your data is telling you that you put in a policy that you need to revise, then that's what this group is going to be looking for the school to be able to share with them, so that you can make informed decisions moving forward, whether or not you want the policy to remain the way you have it written, or you need to make some adjustments to it. But I think for everyone, there is that concern of that attachment and that what has happened to the brains of young people, because they've always had access to a cellphone. They're a different generation than adults who grew up and learned to use it or got one later in life. They've always had it, and it's part of who they are in some ways. And so helping them adjust to the idea that they still have it, they're just not using it during the school day, is a huge adjustment, that how we support that in this school will determine whether or not they're successful in moving this forward as the culture of the school, or whether you're revisiting your policy and making a different decision.
I'm not an IT person, but Mr. Vega, you could probably shine in. Is there an ability to, to put an, an app on our student devices where this text for help can be utilized anonymously, or?
Yeah, I don't want to speak for BPS's IT team, but I'm sure if they haven't already, there are several tools that can be implemented that would allow for, you know, to mitigate, you know, what's lost by students not having the phone. I'll also say that I've worked in school environments, I haven't worked in a school environment that's used yonder packs yet, but I've worked in school environments where, middle school environments, where students actually turn their phones in upon arriving at school and received it on the, on the way out. And in those cases, what we discovered is that almost everything that they were accomplishing via their phones that was school-related, also, you know, things that were, you know, we had a number of students who used their phones to meet, for music, to deal with dysregulation. And so our team just made sure that certain music channels were available, so that students could leverage their laptops in school for that purpose. So, so I, you know, shorter answer is, I'm sure the team has something, I don't know what they have, but there's no shortage of solutions.
Mrs. Oliver?
I didn't even know we had a texting system that does that, honestly. Do we have that number posted throughout the high school and also middle school? And also like the 1-100, like, you know, suicide hotline and different hotlines to have those posted? Or even if there's a way we can create an email that they can also, like through their device, they can also send a quick email, just let them, you know, somebody basically aid them or whatever's going on to get some type of support?
So we will go through, there used to be hotlines and all of that information throughout every school. That will be one of the things that we'll make sure that the principals, when they're doing their walkthrough and making sure their buildings are ready, that that information is, is available throughout the schools so that students can see where they can reach out for help if there's not an adult right there for them to talk to, or they don't feel comfortable speaking to an adult. We'll make sure that that information is out. In terms of using email, again, some do. And just, again, it goes back to how are we informing students of what they do have access to? And so we talk about what they won't have access to. It's going to be really critical that we're educating them on what they do have access to, and not only what they have access to, but how to actually use it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Azak?
I apologize if I missed this. So is that hotline just for the high school, or is it for all students?
So we used to have TextaTip for the district, and so the boxer was for the high school. Other schools had one as well. We'll make sure that that still exists and check, and we'll check the handbooks and make sure if it's in the other handbooks that we are still using that. It does cost money, so I have to make sure that it was not aligned on a budget that. It does cost money, so I have to make sure that it was not a line item in a budget that was no longer, that was cut because of underuse. And so we'll make sure that if it's, if it's still functional and that we're still paying for it, that it is, it is made very clear. If it is no longer functional because it was something that was eliminated because people weren't using it, we'll take that out, but we'll make sure we're communicating how else students can get that help.
I think you mentioned it earlier. If we're not using something, I think maybe it's just, it's not well advertised with our students. And I think if we, um, put it out there and let them know that we have this, make it visible for them, um, we want students to come forward. And a lot of times in the past, our students coming forward and trusting in our teachers and our staff has helped us stop things before they, they escalated. So I would definitely, I'm going to, you know, it's wonderful to have that. I just want to make sure that the proper personnel are trained, whoever's getting this, to deal with the issues that might be coming over the text message. There's got to have proper training to deal with some of these, not that, I'm not sure where it's going, whether it's our law enforcement or, or personnel that are trained. We just have to make sure they're properly trained and, um, know when to alert the superintendent and others.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll make sure we get that information to you by the end of the week. And that way we know, is it functional? If it is, and we're, we're still funding that, um, who is receiving the messages and how we'll move forward with that. We'll make sure you have that by the end of the week.
Any follow-up, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, Ms. Walder, I don't, I don't want you to think I'm looking through this for mistakes.
Oh, but we want you to, so that's not a bad thing.
On the high school handbook, there's no page, but it's, I mean, there's no page number, but it's the academic calendar. Twenty-four, twenty-five. It's in the middle of, uh, it's at the page twenty-four. In between page nine. The reason I'm asking, it says on the bottom, it's approved by the Brockton School Committee on August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, which hasn't even got here yet.
Okay, so it says, say that again, please.
On the bottom, approved by the Brockton School Committee, August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
That date hasn't arrived yet.
You're right.
On the bottom, Judy.
Just, I think, just put a, that's just a scrivviness error because we voted on it at the last meeting.
Yeah.
So we just have to change the date.
Yeah.
No, it looks like they're changing the Edison Academy, the champion. That's not a scrivviness.
No, no, I'm talking about the fifteenth. I think it's probably, it's probably supposed to be the fifth or something, but we can check the minutes on when the actual date was. Because we voted on the calendar already.
You did approve the calendar already.
Well, the calendar was approved, but the Edison Day has, was changed to champion on this.
You made that decision, that was July. It was your July meeting where you made that decision. So they put August instead of July, but we can fix that.
Okay.
I think they just, they just changed the name of the school because it was Edison Day versus Champion.
No, I know.
I understand, I understand.
The date is wrong, that's all.
Yeah, the date's, that's probably just.
So we'll change it to the date that you, that you actually voted that, that changed.
Vice Chair, we only have one minute before we have to go in.
No follow-up questions?
I do.
Mrs. Azak, um, Mrs. Sullivan, followed by Ms. Azak.
Just on this one, academic counseling on the last page. Student sixteen-plus leaving school. It just, it mentions Norwell Public Schools, high school, but not Brockton.
Mr. Sullivan pointed that out, so I do have that changed. Thank you.
Okay. I didn't hear him, sorry.
It's all right.
Ms. Azak?
So I just, um, for this evening, I'm not sure about the rest of the members, I was only able to get through three of the books. Are you looking for a vote or is there something we can wait till the next meeting? Because if, if they need to translate them into different languages, there's only minor changes that they just need to go up and, and make revisions. It's not like they're translating the whole book. So is it something, I'm not sure about the rest of the members, I was only able to get through three of the books, um, reading them.
Your next regular meeting is when school starts. So I just need some direction from you on how you would like us to proceed because when the doors open, we need to give them something.
What is the actual timeframe to get these all printed out? Or is that something that we do in-house?
Uh, we do a lot of the printing in-house. We ultimately, where we want to fall on the right side of things is having them translated and at least online. And so we can, we can work on getting them translated, certainly. And there are some things that are just a few changes and other things that will be more significant changes. But we want to make sure that when we open, open the doors, that somebody can access, the, the minor changes we can fix, the major things that we want to make sure people know we want them to have access to. And we want them to be able to access it in, in the languages that they, they need to access it in. So, um, you give me a timeline and I, we will work with whatever you give us to make sure it gets done.
Chair, I mean, we have the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth. There's two more. If the rest of the committee's fine with it, then that's fine. I just know, I was going page by page and I was trying to get through, through the information. So, but if the rest of the committee was able to review all the booklets, whatever the committee's will is.
So do we want to hold off until the twenty-seventh? Is that enough time? Two weeks before?
The twenty-first, a week.
Twenty-first? Actually, that's a Wednesday.
Oh, sorry. The twentieth?
Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday. Have another, I mean, there's a few more policies that need to come, get approved, but we can hold off until, till the twentieth, if that's the will of the committee.
We'd have to call a special right after that to ratify it though.
Yep. Mr. Vega?
Uh, would it be possible in the interim, just to help with time? Is it, I don't know if the rules allow for email questions to the superintendent, to Ms. Walder, and so that we can keep the ball rolling and just vote as opposed to air?
Yes, yes. That's, that's.
I was hoping that that would be the case in any edits that you see, like a date change or something that stands out to you if you, as it comes up, if you sent that to us as well, so that when we see each other next Tuesday, um, we will have already known and fixed it so that it won't be something that you tell us and then we have to take the time to fix it and still try to get things moved forward.
So.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Mayor.
What if, what if we, we kind of dissected it? I mean, a lot of us reviewed the Brockton High one and that's a critical one because that has a lot of new verbiage in there. We've made, in good catches, Judy and Tim, we've made some changes. So why, why couldn't we take a vote on that? And then that would give Ms. Walder, Deputy Walder, some time to, to get it translated. And then we can kind of multitask and call a special subcommittee on the twentieth, followed by a special for the purpose of the rest of the handbooks being approved.
Agreed.
Would that help you, deputy?
That would help.
Okay.
As long as you're comfortable with what you've seen in there and the things that you highlighted, which was that, I'll just call them back out to you, wanting some information on a Beardo World Distribution, the expert to make sure that it's clearly identified. The cellphone policy that you voted on in March replaced the one that is in the book. You were going to come back at some point and decide what you were going to do with IT damages to laptops. So that can be the addendum that you'll add to all of the handbooks. We'll check on the hotline and have an answer for you for that. The academic counseling package to make sure that it reads Brockton High, where they adopted some things from somewhere else and missed, and missed putting Brockton where it says Norwell. And make sure that there's some information on ways to communicate. So really, the only change, real change was the date and the cellphone policy. Some of the other things are, are the supports that go with the handbook. So if I've captured all of that, then I would say yes, I think it would be good to go ahead and vote for that one. And then Tuesday, we can do the rest.
Do you need a motion?
Stand a motion.
A motion, go ahead. I'm letting you take them, go ahead.
Motion to approve the Brockton High School Student Family Handbook of twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five.
Second. Motion was made by Mrs. Oliver, properly second by Mr. Gosho. Show your hands for approval. Motion carries unanimous. And we'll have a motion to postpone the rest of the handbooks to the August twenty-third? Twenty, twentieth? Twentieth, I won't be available, so the dean of the committee, Mr. Sullivan, will chair that policy subcommittee meeting.
What's the, the, uh, the time right here?
It's the will of the committee, you want it to meet at six, five, whatever the will of the committee is.
We'd have to call a special, but we only one purpose on that?
Yes.
So we could do five, followed by five-thirty? I mean, wait, do we do six o'clock for specials in the summer? I can't remember.
Six.
For regular though.
For regular.
Special we could call it early.
Six.
Whatever you want, Dean.
So.
Six o'clock, how's that?
Mr. Uh.
Subcommittee just for that, so I would say five-thirty.
The subcommittee, five-thirty, the regu, the special meeting, six.
Jump in the gun though.
Let's just make sure we, uh, we have more than enough time. I mean, we could amend the time from six to six-thirty or six to seven. It's the will of the committee, just because you do still have several handbooks to go through.
Did you need a motion? We approved this one. Do you need a motion for the individual handbooks that remain unapproved?
We just postponed, we only approved the high school.
It's the high school.
So we're postponing everything else.
For the special meeting, you don't need to name them individually?
If you want, for the record.
We'll just put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Something on the agenda.
Because it's, they're not listed individually as well on the agenda as well.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, on the motion, Mr. Vega?
I, I apologize, I know we've gone over, but this feels like the only time that I can bring this up. I've mentioned it before, but I just want to be clear. Is there any special rule that says we have to receive material in hard copy form only? I'm not against hard copy. I think some learners are going to do really well with something in their hands. I'm not one of them. Uh, I, I wonder if, if, if we could get PDFs of this going for, along with the hard copy? And, and, uh, Dr. T and I have talked a little bit about the idea of like maybe even with our budget analysis, getting it in CSV format so that we can manipulate some things, record some things. Receiving those and hard copy is also difficult to, yeah, review.
I agree with you.
This seems like the time to say, yeah.
Dr. T can work on that and make sure that we get in those formats. Saves us some money. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Sullivan?
What time is the, the, the next meeting?
That would be.
No, no, on the twentieth.
For a special school committee meeting or the sub?
The policy, the sub.
You can set it because Tony just designated you as the holder serving, the dean.